At Burt CPAs, helping small businesses with their accounting needs is our business. We have offices in Homerville, Waycross, Alma, and Baxley. Burt's professionals are ready to serve you no matter your location. We are your team for accounting, bookkeeping, tax, and financial advice. In Homerville, call firm partner Adam Toll.
At Clinch Memorial Family Practice, we're here to take care of you and your loved ones with compassionate and expert care. We have an excellent team led by daughter Daniel Mester, a board-certified family medicine physician, and nurse practitioner Heather Minshew. We are excited to soon be joined by local PA Nancy Strickland. We provide essential services such as health education, sick visits, weight loss programs, and massage therapy. We care about your future and we're here to help you live your healthiest life. Call us today at (912) 470-2273 to schedule your appointment. At Clinch Memorial Hospital, we are led by experienced healthcare professionals who are here to support you on your health journey. We offer essential services including emergency care, inpatient care, and a wide range of outpatient services. From your mammals to lab work to physical therapy, we have you covered right here at home. Our swing bed patients enrolled in our intensive therapy and nursing services can recover in a calming environment in our new patient healing garden. Clinch Memorial is the only hospital around that offers such unique spaces for patients to heal. Call us today at (912) 487-5211 for more information.
Be merry this holiday season at the Mary Avegris located in the heart of downtown Homerville, Georgia. The largest Christmas decor and holiday showroom south of Atlanta. Come experience the magic of the holiday season with brands such as Christopher Radko, Mark Roberts, and Glitterville with an extensive selection of tree trimmings, tabletop decor, and holiday-themed gifts. The Mary Avegris has everything you need to make every day a holiday.
Don't forget your little ones this holiday season at our newest store, The Little Avegris, offering a large selection of children's clothing, toys, paper goods, and baby registries with brands such as Proper Peony, Beaufort Bonnet, Feltman Brothers, Noodle and Boo, and Mary Mary. Mary Avegris and The Little Avegris are open Monday through Friday, 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. with limited shopping hours Wednesday and Saturday from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Come join us for the merriest shopping experience in the South.
At Richards in Homerville, Georgia, you'll find the best meats and seafood anywhere around. For all your holiday needs, parties, and special events, we provide catering that will make the occasion one your guests will never forget. Whether it's a wedding, company party, political event, or convention from Savannah to Atlanta and parts beyond. Call Gregory to schedule Richards Catering Service or to purchase their famous barbecue sauce today. (912) 487-5822.
For our May 5, 2025 candidate commissioner meeting to order, Ms. Tanya, can you do that in text?
Yes, sir. Grace, tell me, Father Lord, we thank you for a beautiful day. Father, we thank you for this opportunity that we can come together and serve the citizens of our community, Father, in a greater way than serve your kingdom as well. Father, we just ask that you be with us as we hear and help us understand what is before us as we make decisions for the people in this community and make sure that anything that we do, Lord, help us make sure it's all to your glory and to your honor. We ask all these things in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Okay, now you have the agenda if you will, and then review and adoptment of the agenda. Do have one item we need to add that's came upon us as we did the agenda. We need to add Development Authority, Chamber of Executive Directors position, and we'll talk about that later ahead so that we'll add that to the agenda, attend item number Anybody else that want to add or question about? Do not enter a motion to adopt the agenda presented.
Motion.
They have a motion.
Second.
Second.
Motion to second. All those in favor, six to five say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay. Approval of minutes, you have the minutes before you, they were sent to you Friday, so you should have a chance to look over them. I give y'all a chance to look at them. Everybody satisfied, I will entertain a motion to accept the agenda presented. Have a motion, but Tanya, let you make a motion. Bob did, okay. Bob made a motion and second. They have a motion, second. Any further discussion? Any none, all those in favor, six to five say aye. Any against, like sign. Okay. All right. Okay. Under new business, the first item, that's approval of a qualifying fee for probate judge should be on your first page, page number one. And of course, that election will be in the November, first, Tuesday, November, is that correct?
That's correct. November the 4th.
November 4th, okay. And qualifying fee for those wishing to qualify is $1,465.06. Of course, that's based on salary, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve qualifying fee?
Make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion to second, all those in favor, six to five say aye. And against, of the same sign. Okay. Item number two is the reappointment of the Southern Georgia Area Agency of Aging Advisory Council. That's the area, and Angela Jones has served on that forever in the past, and she wishes to continue her service. Do I have a motion to approve Ms. Jones as the member to the council?
No, I don't.
Have a motion, Bob, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion to second, Ms. Tanya. Any further discussion? I hear none, all those in favor, six to five say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, a like sign. Number three, the third item on the agenda is we have two hospital authority reappointments coming up, and one is one that Louis Casada had served under, another was Kay Riley had served under. Both have stated that they wish to, would love to continue serving this capacity. Of course, as candidate commission, we are, we can submit their name and other names if you wish, or any other people would love, would y'all like to put on for consideration for hospital authority for these positions. I hear none.
Make a motion to appoint the two.
They have a motion, Chad, to appoint the two back.
Make a second.
Have a second, any further discussion? I hear none, all those in favor, six to five say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, a like sign. Okay. The next item on your agenda, number four, is to approve the budget calendar for us. Jacqueline, about to start on approving the, getting the budget set up. If you look on page six, you will see the calendar she has established to start and start on the budget for FY '26, is that correct?
That's right.
Wow, it's time to go to FY '26, you'll see that on page six. Y'all have any questions that you'd like to ask Jacqueline concerning this calendar?
Yes, sir. I only have one question. Is this, will, like Erica from the public library came, will she need to, is she on the same calendar too, anyone who's outside that's asking for anything additional?
Yes. What I'll do is I'll enter in the budget request, I did receive it, I think last week or the week before, she sent me the budget request, so I'll enter it into the budget for y'all to look at, because I'll enter all budget requests in no matter what. And you guys look at, you know, what the budget looks like as a whole with all those requests in at our budget work session on June the 2nd, because when y'all first see all those put in. So we'll go through each budget request and, you know, approve, you know, kind of approve, take away, add, you know, whatever y'all decide.
I just want to be sure hers was in, because she was here.
Yes, I put it in my budget request file, so I've got it in there.
And if you have anybody that's come to talk to you, make sure that you encourage him to get in touch with Jacqueline, send that to Jacqueline, I think Health Department, they're a fallen way short this year too. And we may have to look at some amatory service too as far as the requests and then. And so I told them, I told them to send their request in to her, of course, she can put it into the budget for us to look at. And if you have anyone else that you know and may be wanting to request an increase in the budget in order to ask them to do the same thing, and we'll follow up on that at our budget. Okay. Any other questions? They have a motion to approve the calendar that's submitted by Jacqueline for the, for the budget development. Do I have a motion, Tanya, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion to second, Chad. Any further discussion? I hear none, all those in favor, six to five say aye. Any opposed, a like sign. Okay, number five, approved agreement with Southern Georgia Regional Commission for technical assistance service for the land use settlement for the 2025 comprehensive plan update. Ms. Jacqueline, I will let you take that from there.
Okay. This is just our agreement with the regional commission for them to help us with our property plan update and developing, there's a land use element that's complicated that we could not do on our own. So we, every five years, we have to do this update, and we use, we always use them to help with this. It's $11,000, the cost is for them to do it, but what we always do is we prorate the cost, because we, because the cities, the Homerville, Argyle, Fargo, and Dupont are all part of this comprehensive plan too, so we prorate the cost by population, and it'll be about the 2020 census population, so.
Of course, what we do, we'll pay the bill, and they will reap, and they will reimburse us.
That's right.
Okay.
And I'll ask them to see if they can bill us for it after August the 1st.
Okay.
For the budget.
Okay.
Since it's not in currently on budget right now.
Okay. Any other questions regarding this? I hear none, do I have a motion to approve? Or disagree?
Make a motion.
Motion.
Okay, a motion, just take your choice, okay?
I'll just give a second.
Okay. Take your choice. Motion to second, all those in favor, six to five say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, a like sign. Okay. Moving on down to item number six, approved 2025 state paid candidate reimburse contract resolution. Ms. Jacqueline, I'll let you handle that one too.
This is a request coming from the district attorney's office, and we have, we did do this a few years back, we have, he's required to send this resolution to all the counties in our circle, because the, one of the, one or two, there may be more than just one position in our county, is county paid, they sent us a bill for part of the salary for, I believe it's just an administrative assistant in the DA's office, but they also fall underneath, they're allowed to fall underneath the state benefits and pensions, but we have to do a resolution authorizing, even though they're county partially paid, they can still fall underneath the state benefits. So we have to designate the DA as the designee for submitting that to the state.
And this chair by all five, all five of them?
Yes.
Yes, that's the position. I think we've done this in the past, and this is ongoing, and we're doing this right now.
Yes, that's correct.
So it's just, this is just a continuation of what we've done in the past, if I agree. Okay, any other questions regarding this? I hear none, all those in favor, six to five say aye. Any opposed, a like sign. Okay, item number seven, termite warranty with Cinco for commission office bill.
Cinco just recently contacted me, and back around 2005, they said that they had put down a, it's called a, let's see, a liquid termite, termiteicide around our building, and that was supposed to last for, for I guess more than 10 years. But of course, now, you know, that's a long time ago now, 2005, and now we're in 2026. So they are recommending that we get a termite baiting system around the building, like drill the holes, y'all, I'm sure y'all have one around your house where there's a hole in a little circular green plate. They recommend doing 24 of them, which will cost $5,200 or $5,250 to put those in, and then after that, it's $643 per year. The other option is to do another liquid termicide treatment like we did back then, but those only last five years now. I guess they have a shorter life expectancy now. So that would be $6,650 to do that treatment, then $643 per year. But then you're looking at having to do the whole thing all over again in five years. So you're better off, it looks to me like, to do the termite baiting system. So I was going to recommend that we do that, and I was going to ask them if we can do the treatment after August 1st, and then we can put it in the new budget as well.
Are we in a contract with these people? The reason I'm asking is, I mean, can we ask, say anybody else to do it cheaper, I mean, or something, I'm not sure.
Well, we could bid it out, because I mean, we don't have, I'm not aware of a contract with them.
That's what I'm just saying.
Ask for, they ask for several right here.
Yeah, we might have asked for a bit.
They get so much rep because they should have insurance and cover if you have a termite infestation.
But I mean, if this is coming up, I would think we should at least see if somebody else wants to bid on it.
Yeah, okay. They can do that.
I'll just table this in, we'll table this.
I mean, if that's okay with y'all.
That's good. I'll just table this, make sure that we get someone, you know, that's bonded.
Well, it's a commodity.
Those type of things, so we'll make sure we're covered if we do have an infestation after we do it.
Sure, I was looking for another call.
Okay, so are y'all good to table that and have her get some bids? So we're just going to table item number seven, it's our next meeting. Item number eight, the LMEY FY '26 project list, okay, Jacqueline?
Okay. I was just going to announce that we just need to be working on this list, the LMEY 2026 list, this is the one that the DOT does every year, and we have to pay, we have to contribute 10% of the cost of the grant. The grant is around $495,000, so our part's 10% of that. But I know some of y'all had already given me a few roads, those would be in Pike Street, Withers Road, and Berry Patch Road. So y'all, having it to date, you want to just throw out Erica, add it to the list, and have statewide start working on the specs for, or the estimate for us to narrow the list down.
And what's good about a 10% match comes out of teach slots. So, you know, people don't realize this, but if we didn't have teach slots, if we just approved again, that would now be a 30% match. So over a 10-year period, for us to use the teach slots, it saves a million bucks. So that people don't see that a lot of times, and yet, but so, I want to say to our public and to our 16 county area, thank you for passing that for another 10 years. That's really been a life service for us, the teach slots. And not only us, but Fargo to Homerville, and Fargo, Homerville, Dupont. And so they all get a little cut out of that teach slots, so that works good. And we will have, and I talked to Ms. Cat the other day, one trip, now for me and her meet up that all the time, because we see each other all the time down there. She's asking about several roads, like out here at the Rent Park, and I told her that was on the teach slots for the next 10 years, and also the.
Cutted loop.
Cutted loop, and I told her that's on there. Don't know exactly when that will be done, 10 years, but it's on there. It was coming. And so, okay.
Y'all, the wreck, are we gonna start the destruction of the wreck park?
Well, the bids or the bid advertisement is going in the paper this week, I believe, this week and next week, and then we'll open bids in June.
We'll pay that over there.
Yeah, yeah, we got, we got that on teach slots. I've talked to her also about my payment lack, if they can move that up to the very first to the next teach slots. And where it's going to fall, I asked her, because we're doing the 1.6 billion dollar facelift out there, and it'd be nice to have it all paid and all done at one time, before I pass them over to the regional office, if they can take it and move that up. And I would stay on top of that too, I'll watch for that.
A lot of people so calm down, not running.
So anyhow, if you will, if you have any projects that you want to add to this LMEY list for FY '26, this is the state grant we get each year, if you will, just take and just get those to Jacqueline, and she'll have them, and she'll get statewide, give us a call statement on those.
That's right.
Okay, number nine, Ms. Jacqueline, I'll let you talk about that too, we got some buildings too.
This is the, it's called the Local Road Assistant Administration Grant offered by the DOT, this is the second, they, well, second time for, the second year in a row they have offered this. It's additional, it's like LMEY, LMEY funding that does not require a match, and our amount And as you remember, last year, we used the same grant money to redo all the pipes. So I've talked to Steven, and there are quite a bit of other pipes that are, especially on some county dirt roads that need replacing, so I was going to recommend us look at doing that. And then there's also a couple other spots on Antioch Road and Withers Road that we still need to fix that didn't get to it on this past round of funding. So I would recommend us go ahead and, they could run around with me and Steven, and we can show them those dirt roads, we can start getting estimates on that, if that sounds good to you guys.
Well, the dirt roads, I think we can do most of the work there ourselves, but on paved roads, it's better if we get somewhere else to come in and do that. If you have, I know you've been down to Antioch Road all the time, but y'all have, that's really has helped that. But if y'all know of anything else that really needs to be fixed, or what's happening, you see these pipes, that sort of caved in like that, and a bunch on, a bunch on the state highway, 441, there's one back one that get there by my house, because that's state, that's not us. And if you know anyone, get that, get those to Jacqueline, where she can be looking at that and be thinking about what else we can do, because that shouldn't take all $619,000, and then maybe we can take and look at all our LMEYs, sort of work there. So if you have anything, make sure you get Jacqueline on, and that's really nice, that we're going to be able, that's over almost, almost one quarter million dollars we got in two years, and it's sort of floating down to heaven. And then we got another, if you want to tell about the federal grants we're getting.
Yes, we're getting a federal grant, it was through the DOT, but it is federal money for safety, it's a safety action, well, not safety action, a safety grant for high-risk roads that have a lot of crashes, according to the DOT crash report, and the Cogdale section of the Cogdale Road was top on the list, the section from Homerville city limits to the Jesse Steely Room. So they're going to widen those shoulders, put the raised pavement markers on them, and then do new striping and replace all the signs, and add, I guess, more safety signs, so.
They'll do the signage on the road, and then we have to do, require, requirement for the county is we have to go or remove the signs that's on it now, and then they'll replace them at their calls. And what's good about that, we remove the sign, guess what? We built our inventory there, we can bring it back, we can use them somewhere else, and we come out really good there. And but how that's based on is, just like the road from Waycross to Homerville, that used to be one of, if not the most dangerous road, that went to Tulane in the state of Georgia. And how they base that on is they base it on number of deaths per 100, per 100,000 people that traveled. And of course, you know, it takes a while on Fargo, Ohio, I mean, on the Fargo Highway to get 100,000, so it's one of the hits right now, it's one of the most deadly stretches there is in the state of Georgia, that little stretch of road right there. So that'll help out considerably for our, for our citizens, for our use there. A lot of bad curves on that road. Oh, yeah. Hopefully they're straightening them out a little better, give you more room, we have you go around. Anything else on that, Jacqueline?
That's it.
Okay, so that's really good. Just a little update on a few things, y'all help me if you think anything. I know we started on the shelter at the bus shop there, right? I know you showed me the placebo for senior citizens, that's come in, it is there, and they've done the repairs around the edge of that, is that correct? The roofing is complete, that senior citizens, that's been done a while, and then the roofing on Courthouse, the Warner's Club, the sheriff's office.
Probate.
Probate, all that has been done and completed, and so, thank you for all that, it looks a lot better. I know I wouldn't have been on top of that courthouse, but that's just, you're doing a good job, thank you for everything you're doing, you're very nice person. Anything else, anybody's got?
Then the real old one for the hurricane, the real one?
We got our 2.5 million on our check on Friday.
Did you?
So we deposited it today, so we're in the works of applying to get the rest of it.
And she wrote most of that on the last. Oh, and then about 4.3 million that we spent, somewhere around there, around 4.3 million that we spent, but we got 100% reimbursement from that, and you also got, so y'all hard work and your documentation, y'all also got, so everybody, when everybody went around documenting all the homes and the damages and all that, and other people that were helping, that we helped out, the firefighters and stuff like that, we helped out their Phoenix pit time, so that we give them some stock with that, she was able to receive that back too.
Yep.
Y'all did a good job, a lot of work, a lot of documentation going on out there, so. Anything, anybody else, anything else?
No, I was going to say, it's probably a good thing we're getting some signs from somewhere, I don't think these people painted these signs.
We're going to have to see.
I think they repainted one by the Dollar Store.
We're going to have to, we have to fix them, but I think we do have a good lead for that, we'll leave that there, we'll let Sheriff deal with that, I think he's working on it pretty good.
Yeah, I said, we spent a lot of money on.
Oh, yeah, oh, it's, what's one of them signs, why that stop sign, $125?
Well, no, it was like 40.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Wow, that's a bit more than that.
Any other places up there?
Yes, still got to do it still, I mean.
And for the man hours.
What's worse than that is the time, if it's defaced by enough that you can't see the stop sign, can cause a accident.
They got the road too, right there, on, going past the baseball field on Oaklberry, like if you're going towards Locklear, somebody spray painted on that section of road.
Are you for real or something?
Yeah, they want to be us or something like that.
Yeah. Okay, do I have anything else? Any questions? Do you have anything else? I hear you none.
You had the.
Two minutes.
Oh, I missed that number 10, thank y'all. Okay, Development Authority has come back together, and they have decided to add a full-time position, and of course, you know, they don't, you know, they don't have any personnel, there's no, there's no one that works for the Development Authority, you know what I'm saying, it's all volunteer and so, but what they are, Development Authority is asking the candidate commission to, is to let that person walk under our umbrella as candidate commissioners, and they will be, they will be, they will be able to use our benefits and that kind of stuff, and Development Authority will pay, will reimburse county 100% for that, but they would just go under our umbrella, our insurance, our retirement system, and that kind of stuff. And so they're asking, they haven't advertised this job yet, they're just trying to get everything lined up to get started before they can tell the people, is that correct, Jacqueline?
That's right.
And so, do I have a motion that we allow that person to be come under our umbrella for the Development Authority?
I make a motion, we need to.
And that was a little kind of personal there, if we have a motion, we have a second, motion and a second, take your choice. And any other discussion concerning that?
No.
Okay, hearing that, all in favor, six to five, say aye. Any opposed, a like sign. Okay. I don't think I have anything else, I think y'all were helping me out, and I need y'all help out again. If y'all will, we have a motion to adjourn.
A motion?
A motion, and a second. All those in favor, six, five, say aye. And that's it.
I appreciate it.
Thank y'all all for doing that, okay?